Excellent. Excellent. The hour being seven P M. On Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, I'd like to call to order the City of Laconia City Council Meeting. Before we go any further, though, I'd ask you all to rise and join Counselor Felch.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Felch.
My pleasure.
Recording Secretary joining us this evening is Katie Gargano, also our City Clerk. That's going to please call the roll.
Counselor Susi.
Present.
Counselor Hoffman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Bogart.
Here.
Counselor Felch.
Here.
Mayor Hosmer.
Present. We're also joined by City Manager Kirk Biati. Before we go any further, we're going to make an adjustment on our agenda right now. We're going to go to Agenda Item Number Twenty-one. Twenty-one A. What's the next one, Kirk? C, D? C, D, E?
Sorry. Twenty-one A and then twenty-two. C and twenty-two D.
Okay. So we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Twenty-one and Twenty-one A on the agenda. Twenty-one A, Resolution Twenty-two-five dash seventeen, relative to authorizing the release of two million, seven hundred thousand dollars from the School Construction Capital Reserve Fund to reimburse S A U number thirty for expenses incurred in the Laconia High School Construction Project. Recently, Laconia High School District completed extensive renovations to the high school building, including ventilation improvements to classrooms and other areas throughout the building, bathroom renovation and kitchen upgrades. I encourage any of the councilors who haven't been there, they should swing by, it is remarkable. Total cost of the project is ten million dollars, the bulk of this was paid for from federal funds. The local cost is two million, seven hundred thousand dollars. The school district is requesting release of the funds from the School Construction Capital Reserve account. Approval of this proposal will reduce the balance in the School Construction Capital Reserve Fund by two million, seven hundred thousand dollars, leaving a balance of approximately sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. This report was submitted by Superintendent Bob Champlin, recommends that these funds be released as proposed. Right now, looking for our motion to move to approve Resolution Twenty-two-five dash seventeen relative to authorizing the release of two million, seven hundred thousand dollars from the School Construction Capital Reserve Fund to reimburse S A U number thirty for expenses incurred in the Laconia High School Construction Project. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands, six votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes.
Five, Mr. Mayor.
Five.
Five votes.
Five votes in affirmative, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Twenty-two C. Twenty-two C, this is a petition to lay out Hillcrest Ave, Hillcrest Drive as a public highway. Kirk, would you like to walk us through that briefly, please?
Sure. So this is a project that has been going on for a while. Originally, there was a request and an indication by the council to want to make this a, a public way as opposed to private. Historically, the policy had always been, before you would be willing to even entertain it, we had to have a hundred percent of the abutters say that they would, that they would approve that if it moved forward. This street was not one that we could get a hundred percent on. We went back, as, and just kind of recapping what we did to get to this point. After a series of public hearings, you guys made the decision that we would entertain this if we had a majority of abutters at least approving to move forward, give us the easements to want to move forward on this. And that's where we, that's where we stood. Once you had that, you were given a list of, excuse me. You had the opportunity to have public hearings on this and hear from abutters as to what they felt, if they wanted to continue to make this a public road or not. That, that, we went through those public hearings and we're at the point tonight where you guys can make the decision on if we want to make this road a public road. Included in your documents tonight is, there's a couple of items. One of them discusses potential, what are listed as damages for those who didn't want to give an easement, and that's included in your documentation tonight. Also, the cost of current, what it would, what it would be to make this public for us. Included in that is some potential costs. We know that, you know, if we make this public tonight, it's not, we're not going out tomorrow and, and immediately paving and, and doing all that work, although it would now could become part of our plan and we could get it into the system. So there's some estimated cost as to what we look like in the future. And the third part of it is guidelines for you to approve. So, you know, there's, there's some areas and they're listed in here, some areas that you would may want to consider as to whether or not you want to make a road public or not. Those are included in your packet tonight. So really, what it comes down to tonight is it gives you the opportunity to, to make that decision as to whether or not you want to move forward with it. We, we, we have our Director Anderson here tonight, who has done a lot of work with this, and we also have our City Attorney tonight, if you have any questions for that.
Any questions from councilors for the City Manager? D P W or our attorney?
How is the value determined?
Wes, do you want to explain that, because Wes worked with our attorney to determine that? The other thing I'll just mention is the only, because we skipped, we did not do items on the agenda tonight for our public comment, so just something we want to consider.
Okay.
Because we skipped that.
Sure.
Basically, we looked at it for, based on projects that we've recently done, and we've looked at it based off of what the value of the property is that's adjoining that piece of parcel. And the adjoining properties, if we're just that little piece that's underneath the road and in the right of way, was in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars or more. So, but in the Academy Street, we had a small section that we needed to take to make a permanent easement on for the purpose of the new bridge construction. And during that process, we determined that the value of that was less than five hundred dollars, but the state's guidance is they won't do anything less than a thousand. So when looking through the process, because all this land is basically underneath the, a paved road or adjoining it in the right of way, and there's not buildable or anything, we made the decision that probably a two thousand dollar double what the typical lowest value for the state is to come up with that number.
Thank you. Just to, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to, to tag on to that, as you'll note in your, in your packet tonight, you, if you were to vote to do this tonight, it doesn't go into effect for sixty-one days, so sixty days after today, because there is an opportunity to challenge the, the damages.
So I don't have a question, but I do have a comment about it. As far as Hillcrest Drive goes, part of it is already a public road. The straight part going down, when they add it on the loop, that's the part that we're talking about that's not private. The two people that did not give easements, their driveways are on the side that are already a public road. So they don't have anything to gain or lose by not having it on their side lots.
Okay. Does that impact what anybody's thinking right now? Saying no. If anyone is here who would like to speak to this matter, a member of the public, now would be the appropriate time to come up and share your thoughts.
Hello, my name is Scott Maury, and I've been resident there since nineteen ninety-eight. And I'd like to see this pass because for the last twenty-five, I think twenty-seven years, I think the city thought they owned it until like maybe five years ago. But we only had two abutters that did not want to sign, but I think one is here that is in favor of it, so we only have one person left not willing, wasn't willing to sign, and he's an abutter because he is actually part, his driveway is actually on the eleven hundred feet that is actually owned by the city, so. And we, we are, if you go straight down to the, the well pump, I mean, you guys, the city goes down there twice a day. So it's just like, I'm not sure what the reason why you would not want to take this over, because you'd have to plow half of it anyways.
Thank you very much, Mr. Maury.
Yep, and it's just the, back probably, I'd say maybe twenty years ago, they put water lines in there, now we have twelve inverted speed bumps in there. So it controls the speed limit, but it doesn't do anything for the, the damage to the vehicles.
Not funny, I know, but, no, no, it is.
It's your terminology was funny. It, it's all good, it's all good, I mean, but our neighbors probably a quarter mile around the loop actually hear the plow truck coming every year. Then if you have a new driver, they probably hear it down on Weddell Road somewhere, because it's probably about a six inch lift on that one, but anyways.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Jeff?
Yeah. Good evening, my name is Jeff Dernowski, I'm a resident over on Hillcrest Drive, I am on the side that has not been accepted yet. My wife and family and I, we've been in that neighborhood going on twenty-five years now. We love the neighborhood, we love the people that are in the neighborhood with us. We have a little bit of a mix, we have several older couples that I think would benefit greatly from this, not having to worry about whether, you know, the roads are going to be paved, whether the, you know, roads are going to be plowed, whether trash is going to be picked up. And we also have some newer people that are moving in with younger children that either are currently going to school or will soon be going to school, so to be able to continue having that safety in mind for that aspect of it would be great. You know, every year, Halloween, we get a lot of kids that come into our neighborhood to trick or treat that aren't from that neighborhood. I personally, I love to see that, I would like to see kids have the opportunity to come into what is considered to be a safe and quiet neighborhood. They may not have that opportunity where they live. So again, there's multiple reasons and multiple benefits for this whole thing to be approved. So that's really all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for stepping up, speaking. All right, no one else would like to speak? From the public, we have a series of two motions here. Right now, we'll be looking for our motion to move that the City Council take, to take the layout of Hillcrest Drive as a public highway off the table. So made by Counselor Susi, seconded by Counselor Felch, any, wouldn't be any discussion. I guess there might be a discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll, or just, who's in favor of taking it off the table? Five, beautiful, it's off the table. So next, we'd be looking for a motion to move that, that the city lay out Hillcrest Road and assess damages to George Spencer and the Brought Family Revocable Trust in the amount of two thousand dollars each for the property taking, taken for the road pursuant to RSA two thirty-one colon fifteen, and direct the City Manager to pay the same pursuant to two thirty-one colon seventeen. This vote shall not become effective, as the City Manager indicated, until sixty-one days from today, and shall be void if a court or board of tax and land appeals finds that the amount paid for damages is insufficient to compensate George Spencer and/or Dennis Brought, trustee of the Brought Family Revocable Trust. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands, five votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. Move on to Agenda Item Number Twenty-two D, which is the petition to lay out Jane's Avenue as a public highway. City received a petition to lay out Jane's Avenue as a public highway, the majority of the property owners have provided the necessary easements to accept Jane's Avenue as a public highway. The owner of Forty-nine Centenary Avenue, a property that abuts Jane's Avenue, has not provided an easement. Copies of all easements received from the abutting property owners have been attached. Planning Board approved the plat for Jane's Avenue at their meeting on February fourth, twenty twenty-five, a copy of that is attached pursuant to RSA six seventy-four colon forty, Roman three. If approved by the Planning Board, the layout need only be approved by a majority vote of those councilors present and voting at a regular special meeting. The public hearing on laying out Jane's Avenue as a public way, public way was held on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Would you like to add anything in particular to this?
No, I think it's the same as we had before, same instructions, and one, we did not receive the easement from, as you, as you stated.
Okay. Yes, of course.
Was there any particular reason why the, one person would not write easement?
I, not that I'm aware of, it was never contacted with me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So right now, we'll be looking for a motion to request the layout of Jane's Avenue as a public highway be removed from the table, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Hoffman. All those in favor of taking it off the table, please indicate by raising your hands, five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Item's off the table, right now, looking for a motion-
Mr. Mayor, would you like to do the same thing with the public comment?
I will, thank you. Is anyone here this evening that would like to speak to this matter? Let the record reflect, no one stepped forward, fair enough, thank you, though. Right now, we're looking for a motion to move that we lay out Jane's Avenue and assess damages to Patricia Mayhew, the amount of two thousand dollars for the property taken for the road pursuant to RSA two thirty-one colon fifteen, and direct the City Manager to pay the same pursuant to RSA two thirty-one colon seventeen. This vote shall not become effective until sixty-one days from today, and shall be void if a court or the board of tax and land appeals finds that the amount paid for damages is insufficient to compensate Ms. Mayhew. So made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Susi. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands, five votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. All right. We're going to go back to our regular scheduled programming right now. Agenda Item Number Six A, Proclamation of Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas municipal clerks serve as a professional link between residents, local governing bodies, and government agencies at all levels, and whereas municipal clerks are entrusted with maintaining public records, administering elections, and ensuring the transparency and integrity of our local government, and whereas the work of municipal clerks demands accuracy, dedication, and a deep commitment to public service, often performed behind the scenes without widespread recognition. Whereas, and whereas the citizens of the City of Laconia rely on municipal clerks to safeguard essential government processes and to uphold the democratic values that form the foundation of our community, and whereas through their dedication, professionalism, and commitment to service, municipal clerks help strengthen our city and play a vital role in making our community one of the best in the state of New Hampshire, and whereas this week serves to recognize the vital contributions of our municipal clerks and to extend our sincere appreciation for their outstanding service to our community. Now therefore, I Andrew J. Hosmer, Mayor of the City of Laconia, do hereby proclaim May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Laconia encourage all citizens to join me in honoring the dedication and professionalism of our municipal clerks. It is a great pleasure to send this down to you, Katie Gargano, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, minutes of this City Council meeting were distributed to the members of the City Council on May sixth, twenty twenty-five, with no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk. The minutes will be accepted as distributed. Agenda Item Number Eight, Consent and Action Items Eight A, Reappointment of Tyler Carmichael as Laconia's Representative to the Lakes Region Planning Commission on April eighth, twenty twenty-four. Assistant Planner Tyler Carmichael was appointed by the City Council as Laconia's Representative to the Lakes Region Planning Commission. His current term will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, if reappointed, Mr. Carmichael's new term will be from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. Kirk Biati, City Manager, recommends the reappointment of Mr. Carmichael to the Lakes Region Planning Commission, and right now, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the reappointment of Tyler Carmichael to the Lakes Region Planning Commission for a term from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, so made by Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counselor Susi. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands, five votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. Under Agenda Item Number Eight B, Recommendations for Appointments to Boards and Commissions. The Appointment Subcommittee, met on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, interviewed candidates for appointments to the city boards and commissions. The following individuals are strongly recommended by the Appointment Subcommittee for Appointments to the city's boards and commissions. Ethan Wood, appointment as a regular member of the trustees of the trust funds. Rod Roy, reappointed as a regular member of the Parks and Rec Commission. Jim Regano, reappointment as a member of the Putnam Fund. Marjorie Wilkinson, reappointment as a regular member of the Heritage Commission. John Moyarty, reappointment as a regular member of the Library Board of Trustees. Jennifer Kritzer, appointment as a regular member of the Conservation Commission. Bruce Knorr, reappointment as an alternate member of the Library Board of Trustees. Right now, we're looking for a motion to move to the appointment, reappointment of candidates to the city's boards and commissions as presented and as recommended by the Appointment Subcommittee, so made by Counselor Susi, seconded by Counselor Hoffman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. We're on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Citizens Comments for Matters Not on the Agenda. If someone is here this evening that would like to speak to a matter that's not on the agenda, that would be the appropriate time. Seeing none, we'll move along to Agenda Item Number Thirteen A, Request to Extend Plantation and Colonial Roads Emergency Lane Designation. Notice that this public hearing is made available in the May fifth, twenty twenty-five edition of Laconia Daily Sun, posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Community Center, Laconia Public Library, and the offices of the S A U. Action on this item may be taken up under Unfinished Business later on this evening. Right now, I'd like to open the public hearing at seven twenty P M. If anyone would like to speak to this matter, please step forward. Come right up.
Kind of want to make a, a comment.
Just have you take your hat off, sir, and introduce yourself.
Frank Marino, fifty-two Plantation Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having this hearing. I bought my house on, on fifty-two Plantation Road about forty years ago, going on forty years. It was my understanding that it was always an emergency lane designation. And we always had emergency services throughout the forty years that I've been here. I don't know when it changed to the point where we have another meeting to discuss continuing it be a emergency lane. I just didn't know why it changed, because I thought it was always an emergency lane. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't the best kept road on, you know, over the forty years, it got better the last few years, quite honestly. But it was always done when it was necessary, just so emergency vehicles could get up. And it was always plowed, those two things always occurred, and I would like them to continue to occur, and I, I don't know why it wouldn't, and I don't know why it changed to begin with, so. That's the only point I wanted to make, and, you know, I appreciate you listening to what I had to say about it.
I, I think going back forty, thank you very much, Mr. Marino, for coming and sharing that. I think going back forty years, there has been an awful lot of miscommunication and confusion about the status of the road and what folks were buying. I, I think this is an attempt to have it formally declared as an emergency lane. It may have just been, we were, we were doing an awful lot of grading on that road, clearing out the end on eleven B. Lot of concern about whether fire trucks could get up there, so I, I think this is the formal declaration, am I correct on that?
Yeah, no, that's correct, and eh, these do expire, and we, with this one, you'll note that it's, it's a very short timeframe, because it's tied to the potential ending of the, of the lawsuit that's in there, so that's why it's, that's why there's a short timeframe, but this allows us legally to be able to be maintaining the road and keeping it open, like you said, you've had for emergency vehicles in the past, so it's, it, it makes it a little bit more of a legal cross on the Ts and dot in the Is. Then that's why-
What's the timeframe, though?
This one, this one will expire in October, which, which is short, but we're expecting some type of resolution from the lawsuit, so if that doesn't happen, you'll see this again, we're going to continue this out until we get resolution from that suit.
All right, fine, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, like, if no one else would like to speak, we'd like to close the public hearing at seven twenty-four P M. Like to welcome up Chief Jubert on a presentation under Agenda Item Number Fourteen A, the EMS Presentation, it would be just terrific.
Welcome. Welcome, thank you very much for having us today, really appreciate it. I have Deputy Chief Scott Lewandowski, he's going to be speaking tonight, Deputy Lewandowski is in charge of everything EMS related, so he is well-versed on everything that goes on as far as the finances and the day-to-day operations, so we're going to give him the opportunity to speak to you about what's going on with some EMS billing and the status of our EMS department. I'm just going to pass out some documents for you to see.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, so try to make this brief for you guys. So just as a reminder, so kind of what this budget entails is the deputy chief, so my salary, it also includes the four most senior firefighter paramedics, all of our EMS training, all three ambulances, the equipment, the maintenance on those ambulances, EMS supplies as well. Most of our revenue is from, from transport fees, from the billing structure, but at the bottom, you'll see, we do gain some additional revenue, mainly the past couple of years from the refreshers, so we hold regional refreshers for our paramedics and for our E M Ts, where we do get some revenue from there, so. And overall, what you're seeing for twenty-three, twenty-four, that just over a million, one million, forty-five thousand, that only included one month of the new billing rates, so it was last year in the spring, we upped our billing rates, it went into effect June of twenty twenty-four, so really, we're not seeing much in the numbers you're seeing tonight from that revenue, but it is exciting to report that we have seen a decent increase in our, kind of our revenue per trip. It's jumped up, right now, it's averaging about just over five hundred, five hundred and seventeen, so we're kind of seeing some trends change as well, our, we use a, a third-party billing company called Quick Med Claims, so they do a lot of our, they do all of our billing for us, and some of the reports that they said to us is they're seeing a little bit of a shift for a little bit more private insurance, so your anthems, your signas, and just a slight decrease in your Medicare, Medicaid, so for us, that's kind of the biggest change in that world, but other than that, things are ticking away good. We're still waiting on the two new ambulances. They keep, get pushed back just because of this, not really supply change, it's more of a worker demand issue from what I'm hearing, they don't have the workers to physically build the trucks, but we're very hopeful, potentially one could be here by the end of this year, very late in the year, December or early January, best case, but realistically, hopefully this time next year, we'll have two brand-new ones as well, so.
Thank you. Can you, do you have any sense of the breakdown, Medicaid, commercial insurance, Medicare? Can you shed any light on that, not, what, like, your, your payer mix, I guess would be my question?
Yeah, most of our payer mix is Medicare, Medicaid, commercial, when I looked today, was at nine percent, so that's your anthems, your signas, stuff like that, but we're around the seventy-five to eighty percent of Medicaid, Medicare, the rest of it, there is a little bit of self-pay pairs, but yeah, almost eighty percent of ours is from Medicare, Medicaid.
Do you have any sense of the reimbursement rate on, on them, say, for every dollar, every dollar spent, you know what you get back, can you, you estimate that, or maybe I can just glean it from your numbers here?
As far as like what we build, what we collect-
Like for every dollar billed, Medicaid, Medicare, what, what's your reimbursement look like, can you, can you estimate that or not?
Yeah, roughly, so roughly for like a B L S trip, I know this off the top of my head, you know, what our charge would be, would be about one thousand, three hundred and thirteen, what Medicare, Medicaid gives us is roughly four hundred and fifty and change, somewhere in there, so, you know, they don't pay the same as like an anthem or a self-pay would, they pay a significantly decreased rate, but it is, you know, income generation, so, did that answer it, or?
Yeah, yeah, it, it did frame it, I mean, it's like a sixty percent discount that, that they're getting right there, better than zero.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it, it, you know, there's a size- Yeah, oh, yeah, it, you know, it is sizable, you know, that's where most of our revenue comes from. So, you know, obviously, you know, our, there are a couple of bills right now in the State House that wouldn't affect us as much as most communities because our commercial rate is in the nine percent. You know, our numbers wouldn't be significantly skewed. Other places like Waterville would be very significantly impacted. But for our numbers, because we're such high generation in those services, it, it wouldn't affect us too much.
Can you give me an estimate on the percentage of uncompensated care? That people, no, no insurance at all, no ability to pay out of pocket? Any idea what that makes up as far as your overall runs?
Not a whole lot, honestly. Most people at least have, seem to have Medicare or Medicaid, sorry. So not, not a ton. We do get a couple. Last year, we do have a hardship application, so people that can't pay that. And we only had, I think, two, maybe three, applications that were granted. It's very rare that we actually get that type of stuff. So most people do. Good work from our community partners, you know, working with people that don't. Typically, we catch them somewhere in the system, we're able to connect them to the people that can get them to Medicaid and stuff like that.
Thank you very much, that's, that's good information.
On the Medicare, Medicaid, on the Medicare, Medicaid, is it a percentage of what you build and they pay? Or is there a set fee, a set fee they set every year, you might say?
Yeah, exactly, there's a set fee. So even though our, our numbers were, you know, the thirteen, thirteen, the Medicare, Medicaid, they, they only pay you a, a flat fee for that service. So it's in the four, four-hundred-dollar range.
Is that fee going down, up, or steady?
Actually, last year it went up three percent, but it, it usually holds pretty steady. The three percent's more on the rare side. So I think it went up, yeah, it was, it was like twenty-five, thirty dollars per overall trip with that three percent. It wasn't very much.
Are all your trips basically to Concord Hospital, La Conia, or to Concord Hospital in Concord? Or are there other places besides that?
Yep, almost all of them. Last year, we did just under fifty direct transports to Concord Hospital, Concord. Everything else was directly to the local hospital. Yep.
Thank you.
On the loss side, is that the difference between what Medicaid and private insurance would pay and what you build? Is that what that number is made up of, or is it?
Yeah, so what the loss really is, so, we actually bill out, so it gets confusing. But we, we bill out, you know, two to three times kind of what that actual income number is. But because the fixed amount, especially Medicare, Medicaid, it, it, you know, we only get the $400 for the $1,300 bill. So you don't really see that in these numbers. That loss is really kind of, kind of everything, the whole bucket of everything that we pay for. And, you know, obviously, like everybody else you've probably been hearing from, a lot of stuff has been increasing, especially our cost of, you know, supplies, like we have to buy, you know, the D-Fib pads, the oxygen masks, all that stuff. All that stuff's gone up. So that loss you're seeing is kind of that, you know, where the income didn't quite meet up with what we collected in.
Follow-up, please?
Sure.
So with the increase in, in the price of services, and I do believe Medicaid and them, have they increased that limit also? So do we see a benefit in that of shrinking that loss? Are the difference in that, for the next coming year?
I'm just trying to understand your question, for, for the Medicare specifically piece of it, or?
Well, you charge a certain amount for a, a service. And Medicaid pays a certain amount for the service you charged. So is that difference coming together because of the price increases? Or is it going to hurt us more? Because we've increased the price and the, the Medicaid price is still too low? And so it really doesn't matter that we increase? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. So like, like our rates, let's say Medicare does increase at another three, six percent. We'll, we'll just, you know, because our rates are still higher than that, we would automatically capture that, that income with that increase without having, having to do anything. You know, where we get, you know, most of those fees, like I said, are, are the, the commercial insurance and then the self-pay are where, you know, most of that money would, revenue would come in for that.
Okay, thank you.
And one more question. The new program, and I can't remember the name of it, where we have a, a paramedic, you might say, or a senior paramedic is going to go out in a regular vehicle? Is that going to help reduce the number of ambulance call, I mean, ambulance usage? And is that, is that cost, okay? Going to be part of this program, or is there a separate program for that?
No, great question.
I think that other program is fantastic.
Yeah, no, yeah, if you, we're only a little over a month in, we have our own community paramedic. She's been treating patients now for about a month. She's doing a fantastic job. We're at thirty-nine encounters right now, we'll probably be at fifty by the end of the week. That program is out of a separate budget, not included in anything you see in front of you. That comes from a grant, a federal grant, that the Partnership for Public Health has, you know, kind of contracted us to do. So that's not reflected in any of this numbers. Her salary, her car, gas, all that stuff comes out of a completely separate budget.
And Chief?
Can you, at, at some point, okay, and give us an update on that program, let's say after you've been about four to six months into it? Because I think it's awesome, okay, it's going to.
I'll have it in my budget presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Great information, thank you for your service, this is good stuff, really appreciate you, you doing this.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Move on to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Mayor's Report. And we keep this really brief, I think anybody who was in the city, I think it was two weekends ago now, we saw the Colonial Theater come to life like Mayor Engler and Bob Hamel and Henry Lippman envisioned years ago, with sold-out shows with our powerhouse theater collaborative for the hunchback of Notre Dame. I had the pleasure of attending on Sunday, a matinee which looked to be almost sold out completely. It was a seventy-person performance. That was probably the best thing I've seen Powerhouse do over the last number of years that I've seen them, a lot of, a lot. It was just remarkable to see the excitement in the theater, the number of people there, the grand presentation of that stage performance, the activity on Main Street surrounding the Friday and the Saturday, as well as the Sunday, even though there weren't as many shops open on Sunday. It was just what these people who had this vision many, many years ago and had hoped to come to fruition. So I just want to say congratulations to the Halperns and their whole team at Powerhouse Theater and to the team that has been doing a great job at, at the Colonial Theater. It is, it is, I believe, fulfilling expectations, and I can't wait for their next shows. They've got two more, maybe three more, including The Diary of Anne Frank in October. So fantastic stuff. I'll look over to Council Comments right now. Any Council comments, Council Haynes?
Thank you. Mayor, I might add that my wife and I attended Lake Trees and Symphony on Saturday, and that was very well-attended, and we enjoyed it greatly. I just want to shout out to Mothra and her crew at the Congregational Church. Love the Earth Day was a great program. And on a rainy, on a rainy Saturday morning, the church was packed. And it was, the exhibits from, representing the lakes, the Loon Society, the Woodland Heights School, a shout-out to them, and our own Conservation Committee. And it was great, and I just hope that they continue that. And they did make sure that you had a Love the Earth Day.
Got it on. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. And I, I brought this up to the City Manager earlier, and I also forwarded to Chief Cantfield. I had a memo today from constituent of Molton Street, and, you know, just off Union Avenue, a long run alongside the railroad tracks, it's just like a dead end or a curve, you used to go over the old bridge, regarding a, excuse me, a significant encampment of homeless on the Wild Trail itself. It's deterring a lot of people from the Wild Trail, and runs along that, runs along the railroad track there. If you know what I'm talking about, it's behind the Canton Chevrolet used car area.
Exactly where it is.
So I, you know, listening to him and his memo, I passed it along to the City Manager and also to the Police Chief, asking them to use their electric bikes or the walking beat or anything else like that, to see what we can do about it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would someone help? I just have one other thing.
Of course.
Oh, thanks. We are reaching the, this, middle of this week, this deadline for the Robert Hamel Community Service Recognitions Award. The council, the committee, any member of the public can submit a name. There's no form. All you have to do is contact Nancy at the City Manager's Office, recommend a name, and that's all you have to do. So that, we're going to have a number of names for the committee to consider when we meet again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, committee reports.
Yeah, it's not on your list, but I'll talk about the Appointments Committee.
Good job.
We did have a meeting last week, we did put a number of people on. But through that meeting, as we've said before, we learned a lot of different things. And we asked a couple of the, of the boards that we appoint people to, to come to the council once or twice a year and present to us what they're doing, what's going on, give us an update. The two we talked to about that specifically were the Putnam Fund, which I attended to earlier this week, and also the Board of Trustees, I mean, the trustee of the trust funds. They come to us, okay? The Putnam Fund, I went to specifically on behalf of the Pumpkin Fest, asked them to, if they wanted to participate, and take over the, the stage area, you might say, for a children's item in the afternoon of Pumpkin Fest, which their whole holiday guy tried and worked on something else with us, okay? So there was that, and talking to Jim Rigado and his team, and they're good people. And on the Board of Trust, on the trustee of the trust funds, and talking to Ethan, okay, that we appointed to, it was just the same thing, because we've all heard different things here, and I thought it'd be best if some of these boards come to us once or twice a year and just make a presentation.
I think that's wise, otherwise we're going to have to be appointing more liaisons.
Right, but that's, and that, I mean, that's part of the reason, I mean, we should know what's happening. That's all we asked, okay? We hear from the Library Board of Trustees, with, with, you know, Jim comes, and then also the Parks and Rec with Tony here, and also everything else, but we don't hear from these others that much, okay?
Excellent idea. Good work, Council Susie, good work. Okay, liaison reports. Citizens request to comment on current agenda items. If anybody's here would like to speak to a current agenda item, you can step right up. Okay, seeing none? Go to the City Managers' Report, Agenda Item Number Twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attached in your packet tonight is the financial, financial and operational trends for May. Current year, you see the building construction, we're just starting off, so we're, we're low. But there's a, there's a lot of building permits coming in, we're already seeing, any, a lot of people coming in looking to build and looking to do work this year, so we're going to see that number definitely increase as we go along. Fire rescue numbers are there, no real changes there. The general assistance and vouchers, same thing, I mean, it's high, excuse me. But we're not really seeing any, any major swings in that. We're obviously in budget presentation time, and there will be, under one of Glenn's presentations is the Welfare Department, so these will be talked about a little bit more in-depth during his, during his presentation. Police Department, same thing, they stayed busy, but no, nothing out of the ordinary there. Property tax collection is where we should expect it. Over time, on the next page, we have seen that increasing, there's been some ups and downs, we'll definitely see a decrease. So a couple of the departments that were in the high numbers are, have made some adjustments in what they're doing to be able to bring those numbers down a little bit as we get towards the end of the year, which is not unexpected. Our motor vehicle registration's a little ahead of where we would have budgeted at this time, so it's a good thing. Impact fees, you see those numbers are, are going up there. I'm not going to say this every month, but I think you know my point on impact fees, we use them. We, it, we, we want them used, we expect them used. And as these go up, most of that number, even though there's a balance available, a lot of that we've already identified as, as where we plan to spend it. That project is ongoing, and I have not talked to the Planning Department, so I'm not sure where they stand. But I know they're close on finishing up that project, which will be a recommendation to you on changes to the impact fees, which are, we have a professional company doing the work, so it'll be a good reevaluation as we should be doing. Reserve balances, the only two I'll mention on there is the health insurance stabilization account, which I am expecting to, to go to the trustees to use some of that, and the, as is the winter maintenance reserve account. Director Anderson and I have been meeting, we're not sure of the number. It's certainly nowhere near the number that's presented there, which is a good thing. But we did have to buy some extra salt this year towards the end of the year, so there's just some, we may have to dip into that. I never mentioned it, but included on here, and I skip over it every single time, but I know a lot of this came out tonight. You see the school numbers, those reserve accounts are on there. Our exact numbers may be a little different based on timing, this is a snapshot in time. But we do try to keep these up to date with the school department monthly. The TIF balances are there, as, again, I'm not, he's not here, so I can keep throwing work onto him, but as one of his presentations, we are going to delve into the TIF districts a little bit more in-depth, what we're doing, how we're using them, how they're funded, all that. So you'll get a much better breakdown on that moving over in the next couple of weeks. Codes, you see the, the building permits, we're, we're busy with the building permits. Our general fund and expenditures are where we would expect them, so we have no issues there. EMS billing, you just heard a good presentation on that, a lot of moving parts in there. But they do a good job keeping that up. And you can see the, pretty much end of the year, there may be some few outstanding bills, but for the most part, the end of the year, storm costs are there, and we are showing a deficit. But that's the final number that we're just trying to reconcile so we can know how it fits into the DPW budget, and then if we need to go to the trustees, same as we do every year. That's all I have for you, unless you have anything for me.
Kirk, I'll go back to La Conia Police Department Monthly Activity Highlights. Those are extraordinary numbers for the month of April compared to corresponding month last year, as well as our annualized number when you look at it as a percentage. There were about 3,000 calls for service in April last year, we had a total of 25,000. So where, where are we, twelve percent, just in one month? I mean, corresponding month last year was 1,800, we're at 2,900. I'd love to see the, the park walk and talk, 273, we did that 96, sounds like encounters last year. And motor vehicle stops, you know, I, I think Council Cheney would be thrilled to see this. 2,038 compared to nine hundred, only 996 last year. And written warnings, we more than doubled in the written warnings this month. So, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty big jump, a lot of activity out there in the streets.
Yeah, and I think if you look at the park walk and talk, and the extra patrol, the community policing, a lot of that is related to some of the, like what you just brought up, and some of those related proactive policing.
I appreciate that, so, I mean, I, I take those numbers, not that, not that it's a sign of something, anything getting worse, I just, it's more activity, and I think that's really, I think that's good, particularly in the community policing and, Council Susie?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions, okay? Number one, I'm not sure if it's right for this report, but the state school, any update?
Yeah, state school is, they're still in their due diligence. What you're going to be seeing is, we probably never even get to a chance to talk about this before, but at one point with the last buyer group, we were working through an MOU between the city and, and the developer. Never got to this point. We're finalizing some work between the city, our attorneys, their attorneys, to bring forward to you an MOU. Just very basic, high-level stuff of saying, this is what we can expect out of the city, and this is what we can expect out of you. We're trying to just button up all the, all the details before it comes to you. So any adjustments made are hopefully relatively small, because I, you know, it'd be nice if we hit all the points that you guys would be worried about. So that actually would, that will be to you prior to, I'll get it to you ahead of time, but it'll be the June 9th council meeting, you'll be seeing documentation. So everything is moving along well, they're working through the Technical Review Committee. working through the Technical Review Committee. Um, they're working, which, uh, just to, if you're not familiar with it, it's a committee of, um, city departments, fire, police, water, sewer, um, there's a whole group of them, uh, and it gives opportunity for anybody who, who developing any type of large project or small project can come in, say, this is what I want to do, and they can get ahead of, well, don't forget, you need this particular sprinkler system, or, or, uh, sprinkler system, or you need, uh, you know, you need to tie into our, our city services, whatever it might be. They get that all out ahead of time. Working through all that right now, and at the planning board level, where they stand is, they're working on a ma- a development master plan. So, understanding that at this point, they're not ready to come forward and say, we want to have green shutters on, on this house in this corner. But the overall, this is what we're looking for on the big picture item, so they can start taking that and now breaking it down into the different structures. So, that's where they stand right now. They're in communications with either my office or Planning Department probably every day. Um, the communication's been outstanding, um, and that's really where we stand right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
The state hasn't closed on this yet, has it?
They have not.
Do you know what the timeline is?
I, I do not. It's, uh, I know it's, I hate to say soon. That's a, that's a poor answer, but they are moving to get to that point, um, soon.
Yeah.
So, none of this-
That depends on their due diligence that they're working on. There's stuff they have to do before it closes.
Um, the, the last question I had, and you brought up and made reference to it, but one of the things, when I talked about, uh, the mayor about reports, I thought we were getting a planning board report, monthly or every other month of what's going on, and when it comes to developments and planning board, and like we're seeing here that there's been some, uh, you know, building permits, uh, billing per, co-inspections.
So, um, so I know that that was asked of us to do during the, the budget presentation. So, you're gonna get, as I actually talked to the planner today, um, as part of your budget presentation from the Planning Department, is gonna be a overarching, these are all the buildings that are in process and sort of really in-depth. We can certainly, what, you know, if we want to, we can certainly make it an every other month update on that, because that'll be a good baseline for you to start with, but we don't mind doing that.
Okay, every other month will be fine with me.
I mean, it's, it's really just, it's what we're doing there, um, and just, and just a little more detail, and certainly don't mind putting it in there.
Okay, thank you.
But you're gonna have a good, he has a pretty good breakdown going already of, of, uh, what's out there, some price range stuff, so you can really get a good understanding of what we're building and where it fits sort of into the city.
Okay. Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-one B, twenty-twenty-five first half sewer warrant for Chapter one eighty-nine dash fifty, capital C, collection of flat-rate sewer accounts are collected by the city tax collector. This collection is two hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars and twenty-six cents to appro- um, the recommendation from our tax collector is to approve and sign the twenty-twenty-five first half sewer warrant. Right now, I'll be looking for a motion to move to approve the twenty-twenty-five first half sewer warrant, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Susie. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes in affirmative, that motion passes. Agenda item number twenty-one C, uh, this is the request to authorize the City Manager to enter into a one-year extension of an existing cable television franchise agreement between the city and Code Jeko U.S. LLC DBA Breeze Line. Kirk, do you want to touch on that just for a second?
Yeah, just briefly, we've, we've had a, we're part of a ten-community consortium, um, for cable television, uh, and Breeze Line. We are without a contract with them right now, and part of it, it says it, it states in your, in your staff report here, um, is related to the fact that they don't have a local, uh, place for people to go to do business, to exchange remotes and all those things that we've always demanded. It's always been in the contract. Um, we debated back and forth on whether or not we should just hold off on doing this, or how exactly the best method is. And it turned out, you know, we believe the best method through our attorneys, it's a separate attorney that works for the consortium, is to get the extension in there. It only goes until the end of the year, um, and gives us a better opportunity to, uh, negotiate moving forward. So, um, that's where this stands, so it's a recommendation of the, of the attorney to, uh, to move this forward, which expires, it's a, it's a year, but it expires at the end of twenty-five.
So, right now, I'll be looking for a motion to authorize the City Manager to enter into a one-year extension of an existing cable television franchise agreement between the city and Code Jeko U.S., New Hampshire, Maine, LLC DBA Breeze Line, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Hoffman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes affirmative, that motion passes. Moving along to unfinished business, Agenda Item Number twenty-two A, this is the request to extend plantation in Colonial Roads as an emergency lane designation. I think we're all familiar with this right now. So, we'll be looking for a motion to move that the City Council declare plantation in Colonial Roads emergency lanes with an expiration date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, or the date of the Belnap Superior Court's decision on case number two-eleven dash twenty-twenty-four dash C V dash zero 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 five four, Joey Sabato et al. versus City of Laconia, whichever is first, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. That's five votes in affirmative, that motion passes. Agenda item number twenty-two B, which is Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eleven, request to release of Parking Kiosk Reserve Funds to purchase additional upgrade kits.
This was on the agenda last month. There was an issue with the, um, the order of the votes, uh, the motions, so we just, that was what we had to correct, so.
Yep, that's right. So, right now, I'll be looking for a motion to take this item off the attend, off the table, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. All those in favor of taking it off the table, please raise your hands. Five votes affirmative. The item is now off the table. Right now, I'm looking for a motion to waive a reading of Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eleven in its entirety, and to read by title only, so made by Counselor Hoffman, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes in affirmative, that motion passes. Next on this matter, looking for a motion to move a second reading of Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eleven, request release of an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars from the Parking Kiosk Reserve Fund to continue the process of upgrading aged equipment in the Parking Kiosk, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes affirmative, that motion passes. Finally, on this matter, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash eleven, request release of an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars from the Parking Kiosk Reserve Fund to continue the process of upgrading aged equipment in the Parking Kiosk, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Hoffman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes affirmative, that motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item, we've already done twenty-two C, twenty-two D has been addressed as well. Moving on to Agenda Item Number twenty-two E, which is declaring Pogus and Prescott Avenues as emergency lanes until July first, twenty-twenty-six. Kirk, just take that quick.
Yeah, so it already has an emergency lane designation which expires in July. Um, we're looking to extend it. It requires a public hearing anytime we do this, so this is just a request to send this to a public hearing.
Okay, so in this matter, looking for a motion to move that the City Council schedule a public hearing on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five during the regular City Council. To gather public input before any action being taken, so made by Counselor Felch, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Uh, that concludes our agenda this evening. There will be no non-public, and I'd like to adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-seven P.M. Eddie, thank you. Kirk, thank you.